Can you hear me, Raleigh?
Can you hear us, Jimmy? He just has his camera off.
Can you hear me now?
He's on there. He just has his camera off.
He didn't flash up just a minute. Well, call me.
What's this? Or is this for me?
Jeremy. There he is. The honor Jim?
Yes.
Here's, you must be muted or say something.
Yeah, I can't. I'm talking, but you don't hear me.
That's maybe a good thing, so. Okay, additions to the agenda, I guess, one is on these insurance quotes on our city building, so we'll add that to the old business. Any other additions to the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Written all favor sign if I was in I. Brad, what you got on?
Hospital. Yeah, we've got an updated utility layout exhibit for you guys to review. There's four sheets and we'll just kind of take you through each sheet here, just kind of give you a high level understanding of where things are at. So the water will be tied in at that hydrant, you know, the existing hospital. And then just coming south, and then that's actually going to then come on to the hospital property versus keeping it in the DOT right away, just because it's not a lot of room there. There's some other utilities that are already there, so that'll shift over onto the hospital property and just continue south. So there'll be a easement, you know, for that following that pipe. Then if you turn to the next page. So there, this kind of this dark line that comes across the sheet like that, that is the new property line. We had to do a little adjusting of that just to get the track in the field and some of their throwing components, get everything to fit. And so the water will then, you know, turn and head west and kind of follow that property line. Services will go up into the new hospital. And then the green line is the sanitary sewer. Run over the west side, it'll then head south, kind of around the track there. And.
Has Bells received this?
I don't know if you've seen this one. They've been meeting, I know they had a meeting last week. And they've been meeting frequently, so I think he's probably seen.
I think he'll be up on it anyway.
Yeah.
You stopped in on the south side of the football field, possibility for bathrooms there. Something watered.
Right, yeah, just stubbing up a service there. A future connection. And so the red lines, those are the storm sewer, internal drainage. And then that is, it's coming down to this southwest corner and there's going to be a pond.
They're holding pond.
Yeah, yeah, so that's where that'll be, there'll be a lift station, it'll be a wet pond, but there'll be a lift station then that'll pump into the ditch to the east. If you go to the third sheet. Sewer water then will just basically continue straight south for the most part. Final sheet. Well, basically the connections will be made at the, you know, near the highway there, there's that existing 10-inch pipe. We'll set a new manhole there and connect on, and then the water will go down, connect on that existing main as well. We explored the truck wash possibility of connecting on to that sewer, but we put a tape measure down that clean out and the depth is not deep enough.
You're running straight to the.
Yeah, so we'll be just headed down that gravel, that gravel road there, connecting at the. So that's, we're getting close to, I think we're still waiting on Northern Plains to confirm their easement of their relocated power lines. Yeah, so we'll have utility easements for, you know, all of the companies, but Northern Plains have to, they had a line running right down the center of the site that they're going to relocate to the west edge.
We're coming in about right here, going up, we're gonna be right along that edge, all the way over to about it here.
Maybe, yeah. Just to make sure.
Across that street. So we're coming across about right here. Just jumping here and then it goes all the way across and kind of makes a loop down in here a little bit, stops more right here, goes over, heads up to Congress, it's on that field, so.
Yeah.
That's your helipad?
Yeah.
It's about right out in this area here, and it goes out here on Kingsport.
Do you know?
I think it's a joint trench right now with, yeah, that's about right, right there.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
I think it's a joint trench with power right now. So, yeah, yeah, that's exactly right.
Jim, can you hear me now, Mandy? Okay, I don't hear you guys talking though.
Yeah, they can always work around some, the bigger thing would be if it's, they're building footings and things like that.
Want number for?
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
He'll have to get the ball rolling, send you who that is.
Yeah, we might as well have that, those conversations now. Yeah, like I said, we're getting close on the easement locations. Once we lock in, then we can finalize that plan and we'll have that for you guys to review as well. But. Yeah, just wanted to kind of show you the latest and greatest and see if you had any comments or anything else as far as the sewer and water and the overall concept.
No, what I understand, I guess it's still the, they said everything's in Washington, supposedly all A-OK, just wait for the. What do you want to call it, approval or whatever you want to call it, it sounded like they're behind. It's going very quick down there, yes. But I mean, they seem to all be pretty positive as going, it's just.
Yeah, right.
Not, not if, the when.
Yeah, it'll just. Yeah, and then, so we're, you know, there, like I said. Previously, they were pushing, or they're pushing the track and the field component because that, that is not tied to the real development funding, so that can be pushed a little bit harder. And so they might, you know, they want to get going as soon as they can on that this spring.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's their goal. But yeah, that's all I have for you guys.
Yes, to that one, what they got any questions for on the hospital? Scott, you want to come up and sit so we can hear you a little better, we'll move on to this black backflow. Then tell us what your problem is, maybe jump a little easier.
For now, Amanda, so I can hear him talk, look at him when he's talking. Thank you.
All right.
Kind of gather, we don't really have duty, no, right now, as far as any.
The city owned companies besides Fire Hall should be good. The school might be a building that we need to look at. Other than that, that's it. Sanics, yeah, well, yeah, if you're going into businesses, yeah, we got Sanics, the fertilizer plant. The elevator, the morgue. The hospital.
What, what exactly constitutes, I mean, that they're worried about contamination, chemicals?
Yeah, chemicals or anything that can drain back into the system, even like a hose sitting in a tub of water, like filling a pool, anything like that, there's water break down downstream.
But Sanics, the box machine, Spencer thing.
Yeah.
What's worried at school?
The school is more just because like they have the mops things and stuff like that, hoses coming off, anything that holds. I've done it, mop buckets. Well, he said fertilizer plant, yeah, I, I was thinking of a different building when I said that one, I meant the elevator they told me to look at.
About the pasta plant, Scott?
Um, I looked at the pasta plant, but then again, that is more of the business owners thing. We can come and help you guys do your survey and then send it in and then it becomes the state plumber's code.
That's the other, plumbing is cold right now.
Uh, there should be, they've been working hand in hand with each other.
I talked to Glenn here, he says he talked to the plumbing inspector, they have not anything, they haven't come forward.
They said it's been in there for like years now, it's just never been implemented at all.
I'll ask again.
Yeah, so the regular businesses, that, regular businesses, it's just the same bathroom. Like we have a kitchenette dinners and two bathrooms and then a hot room. A mop, there was a sink, there's a sink in there, it's not really a mop room, there's a sink in it. You should be all right, the song started, hoses are.
Car wash?
Car wash already checked, they have a backflow, a backflow preventor on there.
How much is building, is there these commercial, the commercial ones that have hot water heat?
So with the, with like boilers and stuff, yeah, that will come to the plumber they use, you know, it's on the plumber's code.
That's on what the one, is it?
Bottom line.
Yeah.
Well, it's, when I worked with Glenn, you had a B38, which is a backflow prevention, which was, actually all this, right, not even backflow, and then there's another one, yeah. It actually, it was put in line, actually, create, it was always, you always have to bill.
Like Jordy's and Johnson's seat would be one to check too, chemicals and stuff. But, yeah, for the most part, as the city, as it comes to the city, we won't have to do much at all, the fire hall was the biggest one. That was done when you did that. Yeah.
Oh, they put the backflow on that?
Yeah. That was a spendy one.
That's why I'm wondering why it was mine. So you got more to check yet than?
Yeah, yeah, I'm going to go around tomorrow, finish handing out the surveys, just kind of walking through them. If you have questions, you can call or I can come also, they still have to do like any commercial business.
Do you know, Jimmy, does your, does your noodle plant have one? Because I think a lot of times where they make food product, I think they have to have it. Gordon McComroskey told me once, like in leaves they have them, you know?
I don't know, it comes into the west side of that building with a two-inch meter, and I can't recall whether or not there's a backflow valve on that or not. You should go down, Scott, and check with Kevin Tindall directly and tell him what you're talking about and he'll line that up to put that in there for you.
Yeah, I checked it already, it's not backflow on there.
When is compliance?
Compliance, you know, they're more worried about getting the ordinance done right now, then everything can follow after, we haven't really gave the timeline. The surveys are another big part of it, that's what they're looking for. So we've got some. Yeah.
What I gathered, talking to Jeremy, on these water, there's one guy in the state that's in charge of all this, so who's going to come and check, you know?
Yeah.
It isn't like it's got to be done tomorrow or something, you know?
Yeah.
It's coming, I suppose.
Yeah, well, they got that lead copper program coming up here, so that's going to conflict with that a little bit, so. That's going to be the hard one.
Did you learn it, were you down at that meeting, did they have stuff talking about it?
Yeah.
I'm going to say, somebody just already changed yours out a little bit ago, can they still get reimbursed?
Uh, there was no reimbursement yet. Still working on that. I'm talking to Keith and Dan today, they had no idea about reimbursement either.
Why'd you say Jim Olson replaced that one of the hits?
Yeah, yeah, no, they're still working on the budget. That's going to be a big project. They're talking about any cast, cast iron that downstream from a lead pipe is considered lead. So, go through our town and pick out our sample sites, it's a big portion of the town.
You're talking sanitary wise or water? Yeah, okay, so you got, you got lead water lines, and now you're saying if you've got cast iron.
If there's cast iron downstream, that's considered.
So any drainage from there is considered, oh boy.
Yeah, it's, it's going to be a fun one.
Lots of houses.
Yeah.
It's not part of our 20-year plan.
Well, as far as those organs, everybody get a chance to do the homework.
I'm going to crack the whip.
I studied some of them.
Yeah. There's too many questions, you're still unanswered.
Yeah, yeah, that's trouble. So they need to find out exactly what's going to, so we know, so we can get in, well, that's based on that.
Nordest on the path informed.
Are they supposed to keep you updated or?
Yeah, we get updated on it here and there. I stay in contact with our water guys with that, you know, they give more information than I do, so. So they should be in contact with anybody that's going to be involved. Yeah. Where water, like we are and.
Yeah.
Start with and whoever else.
Yeah.
Jimmy, let's just leave it late for a while and see if we can get some more proof. And so do you, did you think you had a never idea to do this, so?
April 1st. April 1st, which if you're doing, if you're sending it to the lawyer's office and then you're going to do two readings.
You don't do it now, we get a vibrant extension.
Well, we don't even know what.
We don't all rule yet.
Yeah.
Pretty hard to write an ordinance.
I don't know, I can apply for the extension tomorrow.
Do that.
Yeah.
In the meantime, we'll still want to, you know, keep thinking about, do we want to find people, what our, what our compliance is going to look like, you know, we still want to have those ideas. Some of the, the details of the jargon will probably stay the same as, as the sample, but the things that are relating to our city specifically. We will want to have that narrowed down so that we can get it to Bruce, because his turnaround time, I'm imagining, is not days, it's weeks.
Well, we're going to have to line up on this too, sounds like that, it's not interested in doing it.
So we'd have.
He hasn't seen this at all, Amanda, huh? I think you should look at this sample and say, well, see if there's something glaringly wrong with it in his opinion.
Yeah, that's what I would say, that's a good idea, just give it, give it up. Make some recommendations too. Say we don't, we don't know what the rules are going to be, it's kind of hard to make an ordinance for it.
That's right.
You have standing extension.
Make sure you apply for that extension, so we don't get that dog also in that, so. Well, okay, we got a, we're watering.
Our increase is pretty minimal, 10 cents per thousand gallon. I handed out a supplemental piece of information that has what our rates are currently. And we've talked about changing some of these rates, but if we just leave everything the same and the only thing we do is raise it by the 10 cents that we are being increased by. I picked a couple samples of usage, so 900 gallon usage in a, in a month, that's like a 1% household, their bill raised 9 cents. My house at 2,600 gallons raised a quarter. House with three or four kids raised by 50 cents, and then I picked North Star School, it raised by $5.
Yeah, that's pretty minimal.
So if we want to raise it by that, just what we are increasing it, this is what the, pretty, pretty small impact.
Or we want to go up double or something.
Or do you want?
Sinking sock in the bowl for the other part later.
The difference is how it's broken down, so this is water, this is a water charge directly with that line item. What we're talking about with our sewer project would be the sewer charges, and that rate is a different.
Yeah.
It's a different thing, so just, just something to be aware of how it's going to break down.
I think that's, yeah, I mean, even at the worst case scenario, 10 hours a month for the school, that's going to be minimal, really, even a house is a dollar, but we should mark at that, I mean. Sewer, sewer, is that now where you want to maybe increase that by like a dollar or two?
Well, in light of our sewer project, we would have to have a significant increase, probably seven plus dollars a month. First, you know, so it, and that would be on the flat fee schedule, not on the usage, so, I mean, there's a lot of play in those numbers and it impacts it significantly different.
Well, we have to sometime, yeah. Eventually.
I almost think, I mean, if we could somehow get one, I guess the water's going to go a tax month anyway.
The water, we got the bill already, and so for the usage of last, it's going to be paid this month.
You read for you today, I'm assuming, or yesterday?
Um, tomorrow morning, but the bill that we just got in the mail today has the new key reflected on it. So.
Well, that'd be the other thing, I guess, the good just, is dying right now, we're going to have to have a call me eventually. See what else, the other thing, I guess we don't know what it's going to be up to the funding, you know, we'll get some more grants and all. So, I guess it's up, what do you guys think, if you want to raise it, I guess? Or Pam, Pam Bell, what do you?
I'm fine with either.
And I guess we did go with the 10 for now, and then this, if you do a sooner increase.
James, you got any ideas or?
I don't know, I hate raising it, but I know it's necessary, whatever you guys think, I'll agree with.
Uh, yeah. Motion made to raise 10 cents per thousand and cover our costs, cost, is there a second? All right, motion made in second. Was the increase of 10 cents per thousand, I'll open paper, signify, say nine. Same sign, motion carried. Hey, jump in, news, and on, you got the paper there? Okay, that, we finally got, found out what they want for the bill on city buildings, I guess, for the replacement, so.
Okay, so the Audi currently, we have insured for 1.192 million. Replacement cost on it is actually 2.818 million. Premium was $618, that would go up to $1,460 for that building. Fire department, we had insured for 375, they wanted to go to 1.2, 1.2 million, 1,002. That's only going up, that would go up about $320 a month, a year, and then City Hall and Pioneer Museum, they just did that ECB. We originally had insured for 197,000, they wanted insured for 912. So currently, right now, we're paying about $912 for these buildings, roughly 915, and it would go up to about $2,400 a year for those three buildings, so go up about $1,500. For those three. That's keeping the other buildings at what we currently have that.
Well, Jeremy, one question here now, if the Audi would burn down, what, what would happen then? What would we get?
Well, right now, it's, it's insured for, their replacement cost is 1.1, while it's insured less than half the value right now. So if it was a total loss, right now, it's insured for 1.192, you would get roughly about 650,000. For that.
You only got it insured for 50%.
On total loss, you would, yeah, you'd get the 1.19, yeah, but if there's any type of a partial loss, yeah, total loss, you'd get the whole 1.1, partial loss you'd get. What, depending on whatever the damage was.
If, if the building is destroyed, will they clean it up and then do we have to replace the building?
You get a partial payment for debris removal.
But just say that it's insured for 2 million, do we, after they clean it up, do we get $2 million and we can build a different building?
Replacement cost, you would, you would have to build the similar building to get the 2.8, say, say if you built a building like, say, half the size. Whatever that building costs is what they're going to pay, you, you won't get the 2.8 million dollars a check for that, you'll get whatever you build. It's the same as if you say your house burned down, it was insured for 500 grand, you built a house for 350,000, you'd get a check for 350,000. You wouldn't get that full amount, you'd like say pocket 150,000.
We just have to hire an engineer for 150,000 to design. Cost that much?
Yeah, what about contents?
Well, contents is separate, that's, NDIF does, I don't, I haven't looked at what they had for contents.
Most of that's not going to be relevant, because these are not, the contents aren't owned by the city, so none of that will be covered.
One would be the fire department, and they have contents on this, and there's, a lot of their stuff is itemized. And what's insured.
That we've got this year to get straightened out, because if someone's in the city name, someone's in the rural fire department, and someone's in the fire department, it's all about to get under one rail.
Right.
We've got this year to clean that, so.
Yep.
And that. I guess I, I personally, the, the Audi would never get built to get back to what it is. You know, that burned down, I mean, I don't believe you'd ever see it again. Uh. I mean, if we. I just can't imagine that happening myself. And that's kinda what I've gathered talking to people.
You'll never get the hundred, hundred percent off, you're gonna get excited.
Right.
Cause they're not gonna let it burn down with the fire hose.
Yeah. Well, and that's the one, the fire hose, why one, we shouldn't bump, but keep. That one, we got it, we know we're gonna build that one back.
I could actually find out what ECB would be on the Audi, like, they, they've got the city hall at actual cash value, that one's at nine hundred and twelve thousand. And I'm assuming the Audi would be pretty comparable to that. Which that would only it would only increase it, uh, actually, might even go down if we went ACV on it. Actual cash value.
This is due now, or is it?
I'll see as effective as of March thirteenth.
Oh.
I have to write a check to our current vendor, um, tomorrow. But we could add money to that later on, you know?
Yeah, maybe.
We can, we can increase this down the road here.
So, well, check them other figures out, we'll just table us to the next meeting then.
That'd be so. The fire department will, will go to replacement cost there.
For sure.
And then I'll get ACV on the Audi.
What do y'all have in the old business? We'll move on to new, we got, uh, uh, sewer project thing there, we're gonna, uh, working on an R and P, which uh, one of the meetings, I guess, Amanda attended, uh, what do you call it, state? Rural Water.
It was put on by Rural Water.
And they, they recommend highly that if a project is big, we should put it out on some bids, you know, uh, get, get, come up with some different ideas, maybe, and different things like that, so. The board or committee mapped, and that's what we decided we're gonna need to do, so we're just a couple examples of it here, that it's very preliminary, uh. We, we've got a, well, Rudy's under the weather again, but we gotta, we're gonna have to have a meeting here. Hopefully, this meet yet, maybe. And get, see if I can get him out more, and maybe we can get, get some more ideas here on how exactly what we're looking at. And then, I guess that's basically where that's at right now, it's, it's just a little thing, we're gonna bring it up, so.
I had sent everybody some other supplemental information, uh, pertaining to RFQs and RFPs. And so that's all, um, some of it's in your packet and some of it's in a supplemental email.
Anyway, that's, we will cut the thread there for now, what's going on, so. We're gonna be gaming for, who we got here? Oh, after prom.
I'll listen to it.
All right, so we should approve the after prom, raffle, all those. Those are, you said, uh? Most been made in second, approved the after prom permit, all of the papers signified by, signified by saying I.
Hi.
Close, same sign, motion three, we have a that you're wanting, yes, waiting there. Now we just, uh, great, I think we just know exactly, so. A man needs to sign off on that. Then we gotta, what is this Northern Light thing?
Well, first of all, I, I kinda lied in my email. Um. First of all, we bought eight new light decorations, uh, last year, and we actually have nine poles. So I would like the request to, to buy one for the ninth pole. Uh, this quote is not valid, it jumped twenty dollars from last year, so they're two hundred and forty-nine dollars each. Um, and then we could, of course, pick, you know, stocking or a tree or a bell or a candy cane. Um, but I thought it would look nice to have all of our business poles lit instead of stopping.
You know they're available.
And I know they're available, yeah. So there's that. Um, but then, the Christmas tree, like I alluded to in my email, I'm not asking for a Christmas tree this year, I don't have it in my budget, and, um, I have other things I wanna ask for, wink, wink. But, um, instead, I, I want us to creatively think about how we can get people excited about Can Do and excited about our downtown, that's really sad. Um, so there's an initiative program, a smaller grant-based program, um, that closes, I think, the end of March. And I'm trying to figure out if a Christmas tree is eligible for that funding, and if it's not, what, what kind of things would be? What kind of things would spark interest in our main street? What kind of interest? Um, small projects would spark maybe another business in order to do another small project, to make it a little bit nicer.
Uh, I was up in Munich for their town lighting. They did a Christmas tree right in the center of town, um, all the, everybody just donated ornaments and mites, and the city just paid the light whatever month they had it up, and uh, for people driving around Munich, they had eight hundred people drive around Munich at night, and both for lighting on this.
Oh.
They did, uh, they did, actually, they went about six miles north of Munich, and three miles east, and three miles west, and two miles south. So they had five farms on there, and then like ten houses, and.
Munich, what, Jamestown looks like?
Jamestown's beautiful.
Oh, God, yeah. Red Albert, yeah.
But I mean, it's just, and, but everybody came for the tree, like, when they lit it up and whatever else, you know?
Where would you put a tree like that?
I think it would be good be- between stitches and, uh, the flower shop there, whatever.
Oh, that would be cute, yeah. Scott poo-pooed my idea.
Put it in front of the school? You wanna hang it?
No, I just wanted to put it in the middle of the street.
Oh, right at the intersection?
Yes, I can.
I guarantee it, it went over.
I know. Bruce and Scott both basically told me where to go.
Their intersection was a little bigger, me driving down.
Yeah. But maybe not for this year, but just something to think about, um, so. And the reason why I put this in there, this is just the one company, it's the same company that we got our light things for, and this is how much they are. Um, regular price versus sale price, that sale price is like from after Christmas until like March. Um, that's the, the bang for your buck that you get for thinking ahead. Um, and then they would ship it about September, August, September-ish, and then you'd get billed at that time. Um, so just something to stick in your hat for, I'm gonna ask another rainy day very specifically about this, but this is just to think about what can we do because Can Do, we, we need some help.
Well, you looking for the permission to get that ninth pole taken care of?
I do want that, yes, please.
That motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Made in second.
Twenty-four to go all the way down Main Street, to be honest.
Yeah, the only stinky part is.
Go down to.
That would be nice to do, um, I don't know that if we have poles.
If they have lights on.
Yeah.
Power outlets. Do they all have outlets?
I don't know.
I don't. Can we check into that?
We can check into that, yeah.
It would be better if we were. All the way down from G A E to the school.
And then I don't know if it matters, but the resi- the residential, um, houses, you know, if that affects them, you know?
Well, then, make the motion to oh, holes of dock electricity too.
Let's find out how many we got.
Oh.
Yeah.
Wow, for twenty-four dollars, at least. Can't be that.
Two hundred and twenty-four. Two hundred and twenty-four, two forty-nine now, yes. So, but yes, I will.
I'll buy you twelve that.
The bracket assemblies up there for on Long Beach Pole, plus a hundred and ten outlets that are wired on into the light pole, so when it comes on, it goes on, and when it goes on, it goes on.
You see what I have to deal with, he's like the Grinch. He really is.
He's getting older, you know?
He can grow pretty nice white beard.
I caught the Grinch sometimes with my.
Uh, there's Northern Pain that you take care of that, since they're, they're lights and outlets on.
I, I don't know those.
They might.
I wonder because that's, those are their poles.
Jamestown has those, look like snowflake on, they just made them up, quite a long time, I mean, they're out there for months.
Yeah, you can leave them all in January when it's snowflake.
And go ask Northern Plains, they might, might or something, yes, anyway, I guess we got a motion. You on table this one time, or?
We better wait for that one till we find out.
Just table it for the next meeting and start finding out what we've got to plug in and whatnot.
Okay. Northern Plains likes to donate to communities, so they donate a shit ton of money to Manac out there, and so I'll try to tell them, I said, they can do something.
Why are you should build, just have a little, put in order and have it done?
To get some exposition made.
Do what? Uh, okay, next we have a, what, what is the solution to this thing at Ricky Reed's?
Well, I was down there today, um, I camered it from Rick Reed's, um, cleanup, and got all the way to the main and right across from where his pipe meets our main, it looked like there was an old, uh, abandoned line. There's, there's a, a root coming through that pipe. They've got the way with camera, and it just looked like it shifted down more. So we could try the chemical, or I would just suggest getting a rip cutter on a jetter, cutting it out. You got one? We don't, um, I would hydro paint any of those jetback trucks, too.
Or do we just dig it up and fix it? Especially, especially if it's, if you think it's abandoned.
Yeah, cause if, if it was, if it was chunks, I mean, he would be plugged up, that thing's taking up the place. Um, and we tried to locate Chuck's too, and his looks more down the line, so. Then how, how deep is it? I think we said it might be around five feet, five, six feet, I think he said. Down right there.
Oh, the, the depth from the ground down?
Yeah.
Oh, that's at least ten feet.
Is it?
Yeah.
Well, it's about being more freezing than true.
Yeah, that's at least ten feet down.
So we can stick the shovels down in the mantle and move it.
Really?
Yeah.
Those sewers aren't ten feet deep. But if they, if, if, that, 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 that's the sewer line, it doesn't necessarily have to be ten B D, but it's gotta be ungraded, so it runs to the mantles.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, I believe it was around six feet.
I see, you, you know, you can cut it, it's gonna come back.
Yeah.
So why not fix it and be done?
Yeah, we could do that, too.
And if it's a bend.
Yeah.
Well, we can cut it now, the date, in the summertime, instead of the date in the winter.
Is it, it's still bothering you now lately?
Yeah, he just, Bruce just went this weekend.
Oh, okay, okay. Oh, how are you doing it?
Oh, that was what he seemed, we thought it was like two months in between, but it had, it was back all the way up, I went three hundred and one feet out, and I was pulling nothing but heavy sludge all the way back. Uh, and then I flushed for another ten minutes with just straight water to try to get everything moved down line.
Does that go all the way down the alleyway to the east and then cut over?
No, it just heads.
It's Pearl's house right there?
It heads east, then heads south, then heads west again, then back to the north.
Yeah, so the flow is going, okay.
Yeah, it's just a big, it's a big U. For some reason, they didn't think that they should just go to the simple lines.
Go off in the street. That's that one behind Pearl, that, yeah.
Yeah.
That's the alley, I don't think that's. It's a weird setup. Well, why don't you see, we get the, look, cut out of there, whatever it takes, okay? Then keep jetting it every month or something, if that's what it takes, just, we don't need any more of these bills, so.
Right, yeah.
I mean, glad, you, you got the package, Jimmy, Rick asked him, while they, for seven hundred bucks for the, I guess, apparently Glenn cleaned it out twice now.
You didn't do it very good the first time, or what?
No. Tell Rick, put in an Iowa, Iowa house or something.
Uh, he said, uh, that was the alternative this weekend. It was, uh, they weren't using it.
Yeah, I imagine that's another thing, running a lot of water, you so they don't get flushed like they should either, so. That's, you know, a single guy living alone like that, out the farm a lot.
With that root hanging down right into the pipe, it's catching, in fact, it's catching right now.
Sure.
So, um, it's gonna keep piling on up, it might be we have to go out there every week.
But no way to reach it to get it cut either, or, how about one of them, is it right above the mantle?
No, it's in the ways.
I guess, like. No, well, I don't have one of them, but. Yeah, he does. Not that big, though.
Yeah, you probably. Four inch. Like two mile or something, had something that could do that?
I have no idea. I mean, that's. Check around, then find somebody. And Glenn, well, that thing got the wobbling up, I mean, maybe, to get it open enough, though. Now, I don't know. You just kinda hit it, just kinda mounds it off. You actually need to cut it and scrape it down. Right, that's what you need, for true. Well, I guess we probably don't have a lot of choice here, it is our problem, so. Need a motion, but. Take a motion, they, they, they'll settle on the box. There's motion made, is there a second? Motion made in second, and they rip the seven hundred dollars, all in favor, sitting by the same eye. Close, same time. Okay, then, uh, we've got a bid here then, uh, from that K L M, that is a water, uh, tower inspection. I was gonna say, I think we might table this till next time, too, Rudy's here, but I didn't, just look at this, uh, he hasn't seen.
I'm seeing an email, but he probably, I don't know if he manages that very well.
Yeah. I wonder if we should just even, or table this one through to.
I was gonna say, I saw this remote operated vehicle, it's being split something in the tower, so the water doesn't freeze if the power goes out. Something that circulates in there, power to keep the water going.
Oh.
Because they froze up solid and wrecked a bunch of pumps and everything, they just turned into plain, or, so. They got, uh, states told them about this deal, like, put in there that was circulating the water, keep it moving inside, it's something that just goes around, and that.
Yeah, but does that take power or what?
I don't know, I don't know how it does it, but it just gets water here, too.
Uh, they did a generator, too.
Back of generator, yeah.
Now, Rudy said, well, you there, when he said that last, was it last week, he said, that ice chump in the cube slammed the side of that tower, so about three in the morning, he's in choking his house. Oh, God, he's hitting up, and there's no one's. It's not good. So. So, well, to put that on the table one minute. Yeah, I don't have a financial this month.
Not yet, didn't have enough time.
Oh.
Hey, Raleigh, did you miss the Harvest Grill's liquor license thing, or did I?
Yeah, we, we acknowledge that.
Okay, all right, I didn't hear that, I guess.
Yeah. So anybody else got any new business?
I just wanted to add, I've been creatively thinking about our building and what, how our building functions and. Our building and what, how our building functions and and what it. What its purpose is and um. The newspaper archives are housed upstairs. No protection, no nothing, it's just thrown in a room up there, and so I was talking with um. Jim Slush Slusher, yes. And uh I kind of had a creative idea to retrofit one of the safes. And have the archives. Available for viewing in the safe and then you could close it and then it's fire safe, cuz right now they'd be just gone. Um and then it got me kind of thinking about. Other aspects of the building and so um. I've been looking at like our doors and how our front doors are really. Not, they don't seal very well and there's just lots of different things that I think that we could um. Improve on, on our heating costs and things, so I'm going to be working up some of those types of things for the building. But before I spend a lot of time researching and before I bring you guys a plan. I want to make sure that. Investing money in that building is what we want to do.
Well, you're not using the the City Hall.
What what you saying, Jimmy?
I said, we're not using the the City Hall in the meeting anymore, we're just using it for the auditor's office, that could be anywhere. Maybe we should give it to the library and the Historical Society, the damn building. I don't know, just thinking out loud.
That was kind of my thought too, is it would be really nice to to have a meeting area somewhere, um not. Not saying that it should be in that building. But if we're gonna throw money around, doors are not cheap, whatever, you know. Just something to think about, I'm I'm not ready to present anything yet, but just again, creative.
Well, we used to be there until the library.
Yeah. The museum also, when our insurance guy was walking around, um he advised us, there's an. Inside stairwell that goes up, up to the top, yep, the circle, um that's not to be used. So um the access to upstairs is is not great and uh. That's the other part of that with the archives and stuff, I'd like to move them. Um even though they're not our archives, they're owned by the the newspaper. Um I feel like that's kind of part of our job to 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 hold those. It it's us though.
Said in that other. On the west side.
What was that, Jim?
They can't put that stuff in in this. The safe that's on the west side, the one that is. Historical Society uses, could we, what's in that safe, not the one where your records are, Amanda, the other.
The city has records in both.
Oh.
And the museum is using their. Allotted storage for for just that, for storage, so we'd have to come together and. And come up with some creative ways to store what's in those safes. Um and figure out if the record retention schedule is even being followed and if we can shred some and. And what's what needs to be in the fire safe versus what can just be in a filing cabinet or what can be tossed. Um but again, I have a five-year plan. I have all sorts of cool ideas and probably no money to do them with, but. Just some things to think about as we're talking about these old buildings, instead of just band-aiding them, sometimes a larger plan, a long term. Saves you money.
Amanda, have you ever looked into some of those records that you want to save, can we digitally save them and put them in the cloud?
Um I suppose you could, some of them, but. Uh. The short answer is yes, that could happen. We don't have the manpower or the equipment remotely to do that at this point. But it is something that could be done.
I've had a few crashes in some of these businesses and we're. Lucky that we either had a hard drive or, you know, the stuff saved remotely or digitally and and it's. Saved our butts a few times with that. So like all those minutes in those minute books, it'd be quite a chore to scan them in and. Once you did that, you'd have a backup of them.
I would say for the last ten years, there is a digital copy. It's more like uh maps and. Lots of different things that are not easily scannable.
Yeah.
Um but and then there's state laws that govern. What we have to save as a city. Um it's a complicated formula. But.
Well.
If you notice, circle sanitation is quite high because I forgot to pay them in the beginning of the month, so that's two months on there.
Okay.
No, they don't get worried.
I will make a motion to pay the bills, mayor.
We're heading to the bar, Jimmy.
I wish I could join you, but I guess I'll have to go over and join my Canadian neighbors, they were, they wanted me to, I almost forgot about the meeting, come over for a nightcap. I think I will now.
I should have stopped recording.
You should have joined us, but we're all gonna charge to you.
But as long as your sister agrees to pay, if you go ahead.